I'd like to welcome you to the January sixteenth meeting of the Board, Glen County Board of Commissioners. If you have a cellphone, please silence it. I know we've been up there, but I've asked Commissioner Neal to do the invocation and Commissioner Duncan to do the pledge. So would you please stand with us?
Pray with me, please. Father, we just thank you for the privilege of serving the people in Glen County. We ask that you just give us wisdom, discernment as we go through the agenda items tonight. We thank you for your love. We thank you for the most beautiful place in the world to live. We just pray your safety upon us, be with our first responders and their families. We just pray for the people on the west coast that are going through the fire damage. And we continue to pray for the people in North Carolina that are trying to recover from the floods. Father, we just thank you for the love that you give us so freely. We ask that we do everything in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any presentations. Commissioners, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda for general business and finance.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda for general business and finance, with the exception of any item of commission we wish to pull.
Second. All right, that motion has been properly motioned and approved. Any discussion? Okay, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? If that passes. Thank you. All right, moving on. We're gonna be on thirty-three. Public hearing, it was on the board, but public hearings will be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing side with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Number thirty-three, CUP twenty-four-nine forty-two sixty-five, Highway seventeen north. Conditional use permit, consideration of a conditional use to allow an animal hospital and/or boarding facility at forty-two sixty-five, Highway seventeen north. Parcel oh-three dash oh-five seven-two, the property is owned Highway Commercial and animal hospital and/or boarding facility are conditional uses in the zoning. County, this is a county-initiated application. Cumberland Acquisitions owner, Mrs. Leaf.
Good evening, Commissioner Stephanie Leaf, planning and zoning director. So as the chairman stated, this is a county-initiated rezone of this property. This property, they are interested in doing an animal boarding facility at this property. And it is owned Highway Commercial and an animal hospital and/or boarding facility are commercial uses in this zoning district. Historically, the property had been both an animal hospital and pet boarding at one point in time. We could not find any record of a conditional use permit on file. And the operation had ceased operating about nine years ago. Our code enforcement did verify in 2015 that it was no longer there. So this year, they did come in and apply for their occupational tax license. And during the planning and review of that, we realized that there was no longer a business there operating, so the conditional use permit was necessary for it to operate. So this was with Commissioner, Chairman Rupolsky, Commissioner Neal sponsored this in order to allow this business to get up and running. And so here we are this evening. And this is a property on the north end of Highway seventeen. And just a view from seventeen looking into it. And the MPC did have a public hearing on this, and they did unanimously recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval. And these are your possible motions. And as soon as this conditional use permit is approved, if the Board approves it tonight, then they will be able to get their occupational tax license and begin operating fully. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Ms. Leaf? Okay. This is a public hearing. I'll read that again. All that want to speak in favor of this, would you please step forward, state your name and address? And you'll have five minutes. Y'all, this is my first meeting at this, so please bear with me. Okay, nobody, nobody stepping forward. Okay, anybody not in favor or against this, would you please step forward? You'll have five minutes. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, it's up to you guys.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve CUP twenty-four-nine.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve thirty-three, and it was seconded. Let's see, Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Swett, it's the second. Okay, all in favor, right hand? Against? That passes. Thank you. All right. Number thirty-four, ZM twenty-four twenty dash twenty-two twenty-six sixty-eight and twenty-six seventy-eight, Highway seventeen south rezoned. Consideration of amendment to existed planned development district GC twenty-one ninety-seven. The amendments include, but are not limited to, the addition of a car wash and use and modifications to the buffer requirements. Property is located at twenty-six sixty-eight and twenty-six seventy-eight, Highway seventeen south. Parcel oh-three dash two-one one-oh-seven, Pete Schonauer, tied water engineering agent for Joe Fendig applicant and ninety-six NASCAR Boulevard LLC owner. Ms. Leaf?
Thank you. So this is a rezone that would, is actually an amendment to the planned development district. And this property is where the Dairy Queen is located, and there's a gas station, convenience store on the property down in the exit twenty-nine area. So this is the property where the star is located. As you can see, it's owned planned development district. And there is a residential neighborhood, Boykin Ridge, that's to the rear of the property. And there's also freeway commercials zoning that's adjacent. And so they are interested in putting a tunnel express car wash on the property. And under the existing planned development district, a car wash is not an allowed use. So that is the primary reason for them to amend this. But there's also some design changes in the PD that they're also requesting in order to place the car wash on the property. There's a fifty-foot wooded buffer that's outlined in the PD. And they are looking to reduce a portion of that down to a twelve-foot buffer, along with a six-foot privacy fence at a specific point that's outlined on the site plan. And so there is a companion site plan that was presented to the MPC at their last meeting. And it was approved contingent upon this rezone being approved. There's also a preliminary plat that is administrative through our department right now because they are looking to break this piece off from the larger parcel where the Dairy Queen and gas station is now. So this is the existing planned development text, and these are the setbacks. Initially, when they submitted their PD text, they were interested in reducing the side yard setback from ten feet to seven, seven feet to accommodate the car wash. But they have done a redesign, and they're no longer requesting the setback reduction. So ten feet, they're keeping that. And at the bottom of the screen, you can see where it does provide for this fifty-foot natural buffer. And that is what they're looking to reduce. So here's the master plan, that's with the existing PD text. And so these green arrows are pointing to kind of where the buffer is. So there's the buffer back here, the wooded buffer, and then the other part of the wooded buffer is along this property line. And then here is their site plan. So on the bottom of the screen, you can see this is their existing access into the property. And they do have a circular drive going around the property. And this lot here, this is, these are the Boykin Ridge lots. In this particular location right here, they did, right before the last MPC meeting, they did submit a revision that they're actually gonna put a ten-foot fence along this property line. And that was in discussions with that property owner. They agreed to a ten-foot fence right here, but it would be a six-foot fence and a type, type A, half-foot buffer along the remainder. That's just closer view of the site plan. And there's just a summary of what was submitted to the MPC. So they had revised their site plan. As I mentioned, no longer requesting the side yard setback. And then they add this ten-foot privacy fence along the property boundary with one-fifty Boykin Ridge Drive. And these changes have all been incorporated into the PD text that was included in your packet. So the MPC's recommendation, I'm not the recommendation, but their applicant's changes are included in the PD text that's in your packet. We did receive some public comment. Both of these were in support. The top comment from Mr. Blake, he is, he does own the property that is gonna have a ten-foot fence. And so he's in support of the project with this additional fence. And then the estate of James Hopkins owns the freeway commercial property that's adjacent. And they are in support as well. And just here's a photo looking into the site. And so on the left-hand side of this access road is where the car wash would be. So you can kind of see that buffer here, and then the car wash would be in this location. And MPC did recommend unanimously to the Board to approve the PD. And that was, as I mentioned, with the, with the changes, with the extra buffer or the extra fencing. And these are your possible motions. And Mr. William Ligon is here representing this application tonight. Yeah, thank you.
Any questions from Ms. Leaf? So that was approved with the ten-foot fence?
Yes, sir. Yeah, ten-foot just along this property line here, Mr. Blake's property.
Ms. Lee, do you have an aerial of that particular picture there? I may ask, I want you to know if that's a vacant lot that's directly behind that portion of Boykin Ridge?
Okay. No, sir, I do not have an aerial of it. I just have the zoning map. So I, I believe Mr. Blake's property, there is a house. I think it's closer to the road, not quite as close to this property line. But there is a house in on this property. I'm not sure about the adjacent ones.
It would be, wouldn't it be one, lot one-fifty?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we don't know if there's a house on that property?
Uh, there is a house on one-fifty, yes, sir.
There is a house on one-fifty, okay. And can you go back to the view of where it showed the Dairy Queen? I think it's, I just question about the frontage road. Will it, the frontage road, will it continue like right here to the left? Will it continue all the way and, all the way down to the QT?
Not as far as this plan, but actually one, so one of the requirements of the original PD was for this frontage road to be dedicated to the county. That never happened. And so that is something that the staff has requested on the preliminary plat for the split of this lot, for that, for that portion of the road to be formally dedicated to the county. So when that does come before you all for final plat, it would be dedicated at that time if the county accepts it. So, but it does, let me see if the plan shows it, it does not currently. Yeah, basically, yeah, it kind of ends really right here, so it doesn't, doesn't go all the way down. But if it does, but for this, this would be dedicated to the county, to the property line right here. So then there, you know, would be the possibility to connect to that down the road. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing also. We're gonna open it. Is there anyone wants to speak in favor of this? If you will, come up, state your name, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm William Ligon, and I'm here for the applicant, Joe Fendig. And the good news on this one is that everyone seems to be in favor of it, even the jointed landowners. And this is a need out in this area of the county to have a good car wash. And we just ask that you would, you would approve it. We're not aware of any opposition. And certainly, the applicant has been willing to work with the neighbors on any concerns that they have. And that was addressed by increasing the fence from six feet to ten feet. So we just ask for your approval of the, of the rezone. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, is that, that all are in favor? All right, we'll close that portion. And now I'm gonna ask for anybody that wants to speak against this. If you'll come up, state your name, you'll have five minutes. Nobody? All right, well, we'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, discussion or a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed zoning.
Second. Okay, motion number thirty-five has been properly motioned and seconded?
It's thirty-four.
Thirty-four, thirty-four. I got thirty-five in front of me, I'm sorry. Okay, all in favor? Six over, under, thank you. Okay, now we'll go to thirty-five. ZM twenty-four dash twenty-three, twenty-two eighty Demery Road, St. Simon's Island rezoned. Consideration of a change of zoning request for an approximately one-point-two acre property from medium residential to local commercial to allow commercial uses. Property is located at twenty-two eighty Demery Road, St. Simon's Island, parcel number oh-four dash one-three-six-three-six. James A. Bishop, Bishop Law Firm, agent for twenty-two eighty Demery Road LLC owner. Mrs. Leaf?
Thank you. So this is the rezone of the property on Demery Road. And this is adjacent to the Waffle House across from McDonald's on Demery. And this property is currently zoned medium residential, and they are looking to rezone to local commercial. They have indicated they plan to do a commercial use on the property, but they have not expanded on that in terms of what type of commercial use. But the MR zoning currently allows sixteen units per acre, that's the density allowed. And there's a mix of one-family, multifamily duplexes that are allowed in MR. This property is, has just a little over an acre of upland acres, because there is some marsh on the property. And so, you know, not, not including roads and my, you know, roads and setbacks, the density that would be allowed on the one acre would be sixteen units. So it's unlikely they would get that number to design on the site, but that would be the density that, that would be allowed on the one acre property. MR zoning does have a forty-five foot height limit. And so their proposal to rezone to LC, Local Commercial is kind of our lower, one of our lower intensity commercial zoning districts. But there are a number of uses that are allowed, so restaurants, retail, office. And there was thirty-five foot building height limit in LC. And so this is the property right here. As you can see, the MRs is kind of brown color here. So this triangle piece is owned MR. Adjacent is also an MR property that's currently approved for a town home development. And then on the other side is Local Commercial, which is the Waffle House. And then as you get closer to the roundabout of Frederick and Demery, you've got Highway Commercial. And then across Demery, this is all planned development, but most of it, you know, is commercial uses in that, in that PD. And just an aerial view of the property. And this is a survey. As you can see, kind of the back corner of this triangle is the marsh area. And this is their sketch plan they've included. So when an applicant is applying to rezone to a conventional zoning district, they are not completely bound by this plan. So it's a site plan or a sketch plan that's required, not a full site plan. So this could change, but this is just conceptually, you know, what they have provided. And this is the 2023 comprehensive plan. It does have this area in the South Island character area. And we have received some public comments. There was a comment from Mr. Blue that, and he owns a property kind of two, two lots down. It's a duplex. And he does have concerns about restaurant use on this site. So specifically a fast casual, like a Zaxby's type restaurant. He has a lot of concerns about traffic and the impacts from that. There, we also received a comment from Lance Tolan. He owns a property adjacent that is approved for the townhomes, and he's in support of the project. And then we did see, receive some phone calls from citizens, just with questions about the project. Some of the questions related to a history of discussion at the county level about residential and commercial boundary in that, in that vicinity. Basically, where should commercial stop and where should residential begin? You know, should there be kind of a line drawn of where it's appropriate to, to have commercial continue to spread, you know, into certain areas? So there's nothing binding that we could find in any of the records stating that this property could not be rezoned to commercial. But there, but that concern has been brought up with other applications in this area throughout the years. So this is just a copy of the support letter from Mr. Tolan. And then here's a copy of the letter in opposition from Mr. Blue. And Island Planning Commission met on January eighth, and then they voted six-one with one commissioner in opposition to recommend approval of this application. And these are your possible motions. And Mr. Jim Bishop is here for the application.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions from Ms. Leaf?
Ms. Lee, what was the Island Planning Commission's recommendation? It went so fast.
Sure. Yeah, their recommendation was a six-one, so they did recommend approval. So there's one commissioner that was in opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, well, now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here opposed to this? If you will, come up and state your name, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jim Bonds, and I'm in part opposed. I'm, I'm opposed if the proposed site were to have a drive-through, in which case it would be a high-volume restaurant in an, in an area. I, I would say it would be more intensive than the businesses to the east of it, which are Highway Commercial, for instance, the hotel, the CBS, the Waffle House. If you had a quick-service restaurant that did the business like McDonald's, Starbucks, or Chick-fil-A does, that would be more intensive than all those other businesses. The CBS, the Waffle House, and the, uh, hotel, the Hampton Inn, added together in terms of traffic flow. An average QSR does about three-hundred to five-hundred cars a day. Seventy percent of that traffic is through drive-through. And for this location, the only access would be off of Demery Road, as opposed to the other, of course- be off of Demery Road, as opposed to the other quick-service restaurants I mentioned, like Chick-fil-A and Starbucks, for instance, which can be accessed through Retreat Village. If you're leaving Star, Starbucks, and Demery is, is backed up a bit, and you can't make a left there, you can snake behind the gas station, you can go through Strip Center and come out near the light at Quamly Elks by McDonald's, and you can make a left out that way. If you're going south on the island from that shopping center area, you can adjoin Frederica Road by going through the shopping center, but the only way to access this property would be from Demery Road, and it would be the, potentially, the busiest property on the north side of Demery Road. This property was turned down in the past for traffic congestion considerations, when traffic was less than it is now. Medium residential would pull in less, it would be, be less of a magnet for that traffic. Now, I wouldn't be opposed if you took the drive-through out of the equation, and you, and you still blessed the applicants with an upgrade in zoning to commercial. I, I think that that could work, and it would also give the county commission an opportunity to look further down the road when they decide what they want there, to say, well, okay, that's gonna be a Wendy's, well, we really have to take the traffic into consideration. You wouldn't have locked yourself in to approving a, a, a local commercial, you know, Ms. Leaf said it, it's a lower use, the, this restaurant use than the Highway Commercial to the east, but it's gonna be busier than that, it's gonna be adjoining the residential properties, and it'll be the most intensive, potentially, business on the north side of, of Demery Road if you allowed it in from that perspective. There's also a question of uniformity, you know, in the past, Zaxby's tried to get this approved, same, same deal, a quick-service restaurant on the north side, and they were, they were turned down by the Board of Commissioners for traffic considerations, and there's a question of uniformity, and whether or not, is it arbitrary? But they were asking for something potentially different than what I'm asking for in regards to just saying, well, maybe not a drive-through, let's not have a drive-through. Maybe in the future, you'll look at it and say, well, they wanna put in a strip center, just like in the sketch that they showed, they showed a building which the western edge butts against the western edge of the property, and you can't put a drive-through on a, on a diagram like that, maybe they don't even wanna do it, because you have to drop a drive-through around the building, bring the traffic in one side, around the back, and out the other, and, and they're, they're not showing that in their diagram. So maybe they'll have everything that they want, it'll be lower intensity, lower traffic, better buffer against everyone else, and again, like I say, this property can only be accessed from Demery Road, unlike the other quick-service restaurants on the south side of the road. That, I think it would be a good compromise, I, I would, I would approve this if, if I'm on the contingent upon saying at this time, you know, no drive-through for the property.
Thank you, Mr. Bonds. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing any, would the applicant like to? Say anything?
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Jim Bishop, I represent Bodart and Brad Piazzi. Bodart is under the weather, couldn't be here today, Brad Piazzi is, and both have been around here for a long, long time, very respectable property owners and developers in the city and the roundabout. We saw Mr. Bonds at the, at the Planning Commission meeting, and he's got a Starbucks over, kind of sort of where we want to be, and I, I respect what he's got to say, but I'd like to get rid of all the, all the lawyers in town, and I can't do that either, but you know, I'm kidding about that, really. But he, he's certainly got a right to express his opinion. I think that we have answered most of the que, all of the questions, as a matter of fact, that we've been, that we've been asked, and Brad Piazzi is here today, and we're here to answer any questions that you might have, excuse me, in connection with this matter.
Anyone have questions? Okay, if there's no questions, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I am going to close the public hearing at this point. Okay, I'm sorry, evidently I didn't ask anybody who was in favor. Other than the applicant? Nope, okay, now I can close the public hearing. As I said, I'm, I'm new at this, guys, thank you. All right, Commissioners, it's back to you.
So Ms. Leaf, just for my clarification, the, the very good points that Mr. Bonds made, we would get a chance to evaluate a site plan in the future.
So the, the Island Planning Commission would review that site plan, that would not come to the board unless the IPC denied it and they appealed that denial, so if there are certain conditions, like no drive-through or any other conditions, I would recommend that you add those at this time, the rezon will be contingent upon certain restrictions.
And Ms. Leaf, in our packet, there was a, a second site plan rendering, is, is that still part of the possibility? I didn't, I didn't notice that when I saw that one.
Oh, there was a second one that was in there?
Yes.
Oh, yes, sir, yeah, there was some, some historic information I'd included in the packet that was from a prior, a prior application, just because at, at that time, the staff had done a lot of research on the, on the applications that had come before that, so it was kind of, just kind of good information, but, but no, this is what they've provided for this application tonight.
Thank you. And there's no current plan for any kind of facility with a drive-through then, could you address that, Mr. Bishop?
Not, not at the time, I think eliminating the drive-through would be a, a, a major mistake for somebody attempting to put in a, and, and we really don't know, there's lots of uses that we've talked about, AI will do an amazing thing, and there's, Brad Piazzi today came up with, I don't know, over a hundred different possible uses of, of that property, and we, we don't, listen, these guys have been here forever, they're gonna be, and this is not their last rodeo, they'll be back, so the last thing they wanna do is disappoint the Planning Commission and the County Commission and any of the neighbors out there as well, and I'm same way, as a matter of fact, but we were asking the Island Planning Commission, is there something you could absolutely eliminate, and what did we say? Uh? Zaxby's. I represented the Zaxby's applicant, by the way, years ago, what year was that, Mark? Twenty-ten, years ago, I didn't think it was gonna go in, but it didn't, and it didn't, but my client said, let's go, and he did, and we did, and we didn't.
All right, sir, and... So we're, we're here for the zoning aspect of it, but a future site plan could come forward, and it would have to go through the IPC to, to get that final approval, at that point, they could ask for traffic studies or whatever at that point.
We had one negative vote at the Planning Commission, remember, there, there were, there was a lot of discussion, but there were some new members, and, and we, we respected that, never could find out why the, the lady who was a new member voted against it, but I suspect it was, she was, it was her first meeting, anyway.
Sure. Thank you.
Anything else? Brad Piazzi would be happy to answer a question if y'all have one.
I, I guess, I, I guess the, the question I got is, is the drive-through? If, if, you, you know how Chick-fil-A backs up now? If, you know, i- i- is that a, i- i- if that were a restriction, would it, would it ruin your plans?
Well, we, we think it would be, and Chick-fil-A has got a drive, it, it doesn't, Chick-fil-A, Chick-fil-A doesn't end up in the highway, and they, they sometimes wrap around that thing two or three times.
They did.
But Chick-fil-A's a great, great enterprise, wonderful, and everybody wants to go, I eat Chick-fil-A about every other day, as a matter of fact, and, and then I, one of the ladies that works with me will order in DoorDash or something like that, but standing in that line was just incredible, that, by the way, the Chick-fil-A founder's a good buddy of mine, and he just is all over enjoying the good life, and I wish I had some Chick-fil-A stock, as a matter of fact, but I don't.
I understand.
But this, I, you know, I, I, you would hope there'd be somebody over there that can compete, there, there are lots of places, you know, I, I don't even know what fast food is, somebody said, could you eliminate fast food? I'm not sure I know what fast food is, you know? Sometimes I get home at night, I may, I may get fast food, but you know, it, it's hard to define, but you go on AI, like Brad Piazzi did today, and you find fast food, what, what are the categories worth of Brad?
Well, there's banks also with drive-throughs, a number of different businesses also utilize...
And don't want to eliminate a bank, a bank can't exist without a drive-through. Um, it, you know, it, it just won't happen.
Well, Mr. Chairman, with the knowledge that the IPC would have the opportunity to review a final site plan on, on the end user, I would make a motion to approve this application for ZM two-four dash two-three at twenty-two eighty Demery Road, approved in accordance with the recommendation of the Island Planning Commission.
Second. Okay, Commissioner Neal made the motion, I think Mr. Clark and Duncan both had the second. Okay. Thank you. All right, motion has been made and properly seconded, all in favor? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sir.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, appreciate your service beyond measure, thanks a lot. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to number thirty-six. ZM twenty-four dash nine, eight-fifty Myers Hill Road rezoned, consider request to rezon two parcels located off Myers Hill Road and the Lake, and Lakes Drive, parcel oh-two dash oh-two-one-eight-one and oh-two-one-two-oh-seven, parcel oh-two dash oh-two-one-eight-one, addressed eight-fifty Myers Hill Road, is approximately one-hundred-and-eighty-nine acres and zone planned development district, ZM two-zero-zero-six dash oh-thirty-four. The PD is proposed to be an amendment to modify the density and residential development type of parcel oh-two, oh-one-two-oh-seven is unaddressed, is approximately eighty-two acres and zone forest agricultural, and propose to rezon to planned development district and will be part of the same PD as parcel oh-two dash oh-two-one-eight-one. The proposed is a single-use family dwellings and townhomes. Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for Laura Ebert and Anna Wheeler, owners, Ms. Leaf?
Good evening, thank you. So this is two parcels, as the chairman noted, and I will note, the notice saying that was initially done for the, for the submitted application had included townhomes at that point in time, so that's why it isn't included in that public notice language, but they had, the applicant has since removed the townhomes from this particular application, so it's just single-family homes. So this is the property right here, so there are two access points, this is Highway eighty-two, this is the Lakes Drive, they can, so one of the access points is this Harmony Lane off of Lakes Drive to access the property, and this does run all behind the Lakes subdivision. And so this is the one-hundred-and-eighty-nine acre parcel that's currently zoned planned development district, and then this other parcel, that's eighty-two acres, is zoned forest agricultural, and this is a landlocked piece, but they're in the same ownership, so the access to this would be the same access off of Myers Hill, so the parcel can be accessed off of Myers Hill via this kind of flag lot, and then also off of Lakes Drive. So here's the zoning map that shows these parcels as well as the surrounding zoning, so where the two stars are located are the parcels, so this one, as you can see, is zoned planned development, and then this one is zoned forest agricultural, and most of the surrounding zoning is, is a forest agricultural. So the larger parcel, the one-hundred-and-eighty-nine acre parcel that is currently zoned PD, this was approved back in two thousand and six, and what was approved at that point in time that's still in existence is a maximum of two-hundred-and-fifty lots, so they actually did put a maximum unit count into that PD, so they could not do more than two-hundred-and-fifty on that one-hundred-and-eighty-nine acres. Only single-family is allowed, and the minimum lot size is eight thousand square feet. So just kind of in summary, currently, if they were not gonna rezon it, and they just came in today and requested subdivision plat to plat these parcels, they could do up to two-hundred-and-fifty lots and eight thousand square foot lots. So the second parcel, the one that's landlocked, is eighty-two acres, that's zoned forest agricultural. Currently, the forest agricultural zoning allows either one unit per acre if, if you have well and septic, and that's an environmental health regulation, or it could be half-acre lots if you're on public water and septic. And this particular lot does have, so public water does run, run along Myers Hill Road, so if they were to hook into the public water in that location and have septic tanks, they could have half-acre lots. So for the eighty-two acre lot, for eighty-two acre parcel, their max half-acre lots, they could do one-hundred-and-sixty-four. Now, that's just based density, there's a lot of wetlands on these properties, so that's really just kind of what, what could possibly happen on these, these particular lots today. So currently, what was proposed to the MPC that I noted at the start was that there were some revisions to this application kind of throughout the MPC process, so what they originally requested was a total of four-hundred-and-fifty units overall, so the two parcels were gonna come together as basically a master planned development, and they were gonna do four-hundred-and-fifty units, three-hundred single-family, one-hundred-and-fifty townhomes. The lot size would have been seven thousand square feet for a single-family, and townhomes of six hundred square feet. So when they came to the public hearing with that proposition, there was a lot of feedback from both the members of the public that attended the meeting as well as the Planning Commission, and the applicant voluntarily said, you know, hey, we'll go back to the drawing board, we'll take a look at what might be more appropriate, respond to these concerns, and come back with a redesign. So that is what they did, and they came back to the Mail and Planning Commission on November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, and what they had reduced it to was three-hundred-and-seventy-five units total, only single-family, no townhomes, and the density would be two-point-zero-three units per upland acre, and the lot size would be eighty, eight thousand square feet, which does mimic what that current PD allows now. So the MPC made a recommendation on November twelfth, they did want to see that total lot count reduced even further, what they were comfortable with was three-hundred-and-sixty-nine lots total, so down a little bit from the three-seventy-five that the applicants proposed, and what they wanted to see was on that one-hundred-and-eighty-nine acre parcel that today can do two-hundred-and-fifty units as currently zoned, they wanted to see that be retained, so no, no additional units on that one-hundred-and-eighty-nine acre parcel, so the, there would be a two, this is the condition, they made a two-hundred-and-fifty unit max on the one-hundred-and-eighty-nine acre parcel, and what that leaves, the FA parcel, FA's own parcel, the eighty-two acre parcel, that leaves about one-hundred-and-nineteen on that lot, and the square foot footage of all those lots would be eight thousand square feet minimum, and it would be single-family, no townhouses. So that is the recommendation that came before, is coming before you all from the MPC. There was some concerns overall about school district capacity, fire emergency services, drainage, and traffic, there was also a development of regional impact study that was done, that is a state requirement for anything over four hundred units, and that was their initial request, and of course, now they are under four hundred with their most recent revision. And this is the comp plan, so it does show that it's in southwest Glen area. And this is a survey of the property. And then this is their wetland field sketch, so as you can see, between the two parcels, there is quite a bit of wetlands throughout both parcels. And then this is their conceptual or ma- master plan they've included with the planned development text that shows, you know, what their proposal at this point in time is for the lot layout, and just to orient you, the Lakes subdivision is, kind of borders right through here, Myers Hill is up this way, and Lakes Drive is over this way. So as I mentioned, the Planning Commission did have their hearing, or their, their action on November twelfth, and they did make that recommendation of a total of three-hundred-and-sixty-nine total for the lots, that was their condition, and then these are your possible motions. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and Jake Lemmings from Robert Civil Engineering is here for the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf. Any questions for Ms. Leaf at this point? Okay. Can we get the applicant, Jake Lemmings, please?
Good afternoon, Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering. I mean, Stephanie gave a great overview, she really broke down pretty much everything. I will say, the, the reason initially, we've, we tried to do our due diligence on the front end, working with the Lakes subdivision, we had some meetings with them, we understand some drainage issues that they have, so typically at zoning, you're not required and to, and Stephanie can speak to this if, if needed, but you're not required... can speak to this if, if needed, but you're not required to analyze drainage. We understand that's a, a major concern for locals here with the existing drainage issues there at the lakes. So what we've done initially, that you, you can't see the previous site plans, but the, uh, if I can get the cursor, so, um, the Lakes subdivision is here, um, and a lot of the water from the Lakes subdivision kind of routes through this area and then continues up, crosses eighty-two, um, and gets back over, and the pinch point is the culverts underneath the, uh, train tracks over that area before discharging, uh, to the river, um, and the marsh over there. I understand that that, those culverts are part of a capital project for the county to upsize to help with drainage in the area. Um, and then also, uh, so one, one thing that we are doing, not only for this property, for, for digging these ponds, but, you know, this, this one that I'm hovered, hovered on here, this is a, a ten-acre pond that's proposed, and that's not because, um, it's required for this development. He, uh, Mr. Ebert has hired us early on, this is typically something you do in the engineering phase, but to analyze, to try to address the drainage concerns in the area, to do a preliminary drainage analysis on the site, to actually size these ponds to make sure they're adequately sized to meet the Glen County requirements, um, for the twenty-five and fifty-year storm event. Um, but in addition to that, we understand the issues the lakes are facing, so these ponds are actually oversized to be able to take, um, some of the flow, take actually a lot of the flow from the lakes to help resolve some of the existing drainage concerns they're facing. Um, additionally, uh, Stephanie gave a great overview from kind of where we've come to where we are now. We started with four, four-fifty with seven thousand square foot lots and townhomes. Uh, we were asked to toss the townhomes. That was a request from, when speaking to the lakes initially, um, and, uh, 'cause they didn't want townhomes. We had townhomes back here in this back area. Um, so we, we threw that out, put single-family. So at this point, we're literally, this existing PD allows for, as Stephanie said, eight thousand square feet, uh, square foot lots with two hundred and fifty max here. Um, so we're just seeking to bring in this FA tract that is landlocked, um, that's owned by the same owner, into this PD to allow for the same eight thousand square feet lots. Um, and, and we've, let's see, uh, additionally, a, a big, big reason why it's important to bring in this and, and bring, bring this in so we can do eight thousand square foot lots is, as Stephanie said, there's water along Myers Hill, um, and we've already had meetings with Joint Water and Sewer, um, but there's no, uh, there's no septic in the area. And so one thing as a part of this project is to get these lot sizes, we, uh, we'd be extending, um, Joint Water and Sewer infrastructure, uh, the developer would be, from Buck Swamp. There is no capacity at the, uh, which is about one-point-two miles. Um, so we'd be extending that to this property, um, at developer's cost, obviously, and there's no, there's no capacity at, um, at Majestic Oaks, so that was, and there's a sixteen-inch forest main on Buck Swamp that according to Joint Water and Sewer needs flow, and, uh, so they asked us to send it there, and that's, that's where we'll be going. Um, so that's a big reason to bring in this FA as a part of this in order to, um, get the lot count that's needed to pay for that, that sewer infrastructure expansion to this area. Um, with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Gentlemen, we have any questions?
I, I have, um, a little bit, Jake, in regards to, um, flood control, uh, I think it's commendable that you're upsizing the ponds to, uh, handle more than you would expect for the area. Have you done any evaluation of what would, uh, happen to those ponds during a drought condition?
So the, I mean, water table out in this area is, is elevated. Um, so typically, whenever, I, I guess at that point, you know, it would be more of your, your water table elevation would control, and it would go down to your water table elevation. That would be, and above that would be your, your storage on your ponds.
And in regards to the wetlands, uh, I've seen that you got a design that should, taking advantage of all the high ground, uh, with no impact on the wetlands. Do you see any issues with, um, the high ground development relative to the, um, discontinuous, uh, wetlands? These pockets that are, surround some of the areas where you're gonna have housing?
So with, for one example, in this area here, so, uh, this, this has been analyzed, so this was delineated by SLY Environmental and surveyed wetlands, so all of this is, is accurate. Um, and, uh, we're going through the core process now to get these, uh, approved. But this wetland, for example, here, this is considered an isolated pocket. So since this is an isolated pocket, tip, um, there is something called the Tolik Rule, where you can go out, and this is the way most ponds are constructed, that typically when you're designing a, a single-family residence, all of them have ponds, and you, you can extract the dirt from the wetlands under the Tolik Rule, literally, just, just the isolated pockets, pockets. So these that are not isolated, extend it off. We can't touch those. Um, but these isolated pockets can be dug out and utilized as, um, stormwater. So there are these isolated pockets, like here, for example, is one, and I believe that may be the only one. Oh, and, and likely, you know, one like this, that could be dug out and turned into a pond because you're restoring it pretty much at the, at the same condition. So that's how the core, core, um, views it and approves it. So these isolated pockets will actually benefit, um, the development and the area to be able to take on more storage and more drainage.
Okay, and then, to summarize, basically is, you're following the core's expectations for, uh, proven practices with regards to development in the high ground with no impact to the, uh, wetlands area.
Absolutely.
So it won't change the flow, uh, out of the wetlands area?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. One, one other thing that I, I didn't speak to was, was traffic, and I know it'll probably be brought up. I wanted to, um, speak to the intersection at Myers Hill, and I'm sure, um, uh, most are aware, but the, I, I know there's concerns with the, with the traffic and the safety at Myers Hill, um, and obviously, we're required to have with, with, uh, plan with over, uh, a hundred and twenty-seven or whatever is single-family, you're required to have, uh, two access points, so we have that. But, uh, we're talking with Joseph Capella at GDOT. It is my understanding that GDOT is in the works on, uh, intersection improvements at that intersection to, to improve safety there. So I did wanna, wanna speak to that as well.
Just so I, I understand what you're saying, and I'm trying to be clear on this, you're, you're proposing, uh, with the lakes that you're putting in, or propose to put in, uh, will also help improve the drainage for the Lakes subdivision as well?
Absolutely, it will. Yes, sir.
And, uh, and, and the, uh, HOA, I guess, of the lakes, it's not on water and sewer, which y'all are planning on putting in?
We are planning on putting in.
And you'll be coming in off of Buck Swamp Road with that?
That's right.
You have a timeline on what your, what that time would be? I mean, is that years or?
We're, we're trying to get through zoning right now. Mr. Ebert is here and can speak to the, to the zoning.
That's another, that's another battle altogether.
Yes, sir.
Also, uh, coming in off of Buck Swamp down Myers Hill Road, uh, y'all will just run to, uh, proposing to run to that subdivision that y'all are doing, y'all won't be going all the way down, uh, to the, to the eighty-two intersection with it?
For, with water and sewer?
Joint Water and Sewer.
Yeah, so.
And that might be something, uh, commissioners on our board that are on Joint Water and Sewer might be able to address, but I'm gonna further on with this question. Um, will, will the people and the residents and their neighbors that live on Myers Hill Road, will they have opportunity or access to tie into joint, to water and sewer if they choo, if they choose to?
So they have access to, to, to water right now. Water is on, on Myers Hill. So what Joint Water and Sewer would typically require of us is when we connect, where my cursor is, with water down here and loop it through the subdivision, they're likely gonna require us, I'm, I'm sure they will, to come all the way back out, and we can't go past our property, so we'll end up stubbing it here for Joint Water and Sewer's future connection to loop it, um, to, to have adequate pressure, uh, for future development down eighty-two. Um, and then the, the sewer is gonna be coming, kind of, and, and around this area, uh, Live Oak Lane, it'll be coming up Live Oak Lane, um, in the public right-of-way, and, and then getting into the property at this point. So we'd have a lift station somewhere on-site to Forest Main down, but then, uh, we would have gravity sewer within development going to a lift station, um, and then connecting from the lift station to Forest Main down, down to Buck Swamp.
And zoning approval has already been, and been perfected some twenty years on the one tract for the eight thousand square feet?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and y'all were trying at one time to reduce that density to seven thousand, but y'all had decided to stay with the existing zoning?
Yes, so that's correct. We were, we were asking for seven thousand, um, and then I know the public, uh, was in opposition for that, so we, we went back to the eight thousand.
Well, that brings me to my next, when I know that, uh, Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Rafalsky and myself sat in on a tri, uh, tri-community meeting out on Myers Hill Road at, at the Baldwin Park Inn. I remember, that was a, that was a big topic of conversation, that, um, the people, uh, in the neighborhood there, in the Myers Hill area, they were opposed to the seven thousand square feet, but they seemed to be, uh, the, they, they were not opposed to the eight thousand, which was already existing.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we, we've tried to really do everything we could at this point to try to do something that works for everyone. I understand there's gonna be opposition. Um, so yes, sir, we went back to eight thousand square feet, just practically kept what was previously approved, and then just did what was necessary in order to extend that, that forest main, and have that cost taken care of there. And also tossing out the townhomes, which was opposition from the beginning.
And that, yeah, that's another point. Uh, y'all have decided not to do any townhome?
That's correct, all single-family.
Okay.
So we're, we're, uh, completely matching the existing.
These are all single-family residences y'all have proposed?
That's correct, single-family residential, um, eight thousand square foot lots. So we're, we're completely matching the, the PD that was previously approved, the eight thousand square feet, um, and, and then just doing all single-family.
Y'all are basically just wanting to match the existing zoning?
That's right, and bring in that FA tract into this PD.
I may have some follow-up questions, but thank you.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. Now let's open the public hearing. I'm gonna ask anyone that wants to speak in favor first. Come up, you'll have, state your name, you'll have five minutes.
Jake's two feet taller than I am. Thank you, gentlemen, for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. I'm Steve Ebert. I'll actually be the developer. Uh, my wife and a friend of ours, uh, bought the property. And, um, you ask about a timeframe. This, uh, this is gonna take a while, uh, to get started on, so I'm anticipating at least two to three years down the road. And, uh, the county's got a number of things they're trying to resolve, as you guys probably know, in that area, so I'm waiting to see how all of this pans out. Um, I, uh, well, I better not say anything politically. But anyhow, um, a whole lot of this weighed on what the future of the country was, and so, uh, we made the decision to, and I made the decision to develop it because of kind of a new direction. So anyhow, if you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, I'm a, I'm a step across the line, political line. Uh, so if you can't get your Joint Water and Sewer to your property, this whole thing goes away?
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I agree a hundred percent. And, um, and so, that's one thing that we have to wait to get, to make sure we have. It's excess, it's available now, but I'd like to get it a little closer if, if possible. So, uh, anyhow, anything else?
Well, I thought I heard say it's over a mile away. It's not close.
It's one-point-two miles. It's very expensive to, to run Forest Main one-point-two miles, as you guys probably already know.
That Forest Main sewer, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I think there's a, Jake can correct me, I think there's a twelve-inch water main on Myers Hill. So we'll get our water from that.
And you'll give opportunity for people that live up and down that road to be able to, be able to tap into that and use that as well if they need, if they so desire?
Sure, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Would, would we know about the cost to tap in?
No, and, and that's on the developer anyway. Joint Water and Sewer doesn't run that. Well, the, the developer would have to put it in, deed it to the county, I mean, to Joint Water and Sewer, and then actually pay them for the opportunity to use it.
And then the resident would then have to pay for the tie-in?
Yes.
And Jake will be doing the engineering, but that's, that's a long ordeal too, before we actually have costs, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else to speak in favor? Not seeing, we'll close that portion. Now, we're going to have those opposed. If you'll come up, state your name, you'll have five minutes, and we're gonna do thirty minutes total.
Hi, good evening, commissioners. Um, my name is Brooke Roberts. Um, my family and I live on Myers Hill. Um, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my family, my neighbors, and the local farmers, as well as some of the broader community. Myers Hill is a very, very quiet rural road that has long been a place where families live side by side, often for generations. According to the Glen County GIS, there are approximately a hundred and sixty-five to a hundred and seventy homes on our road, with an average lot size of four acres. If you take a moment to look at the properties, you will notice how much of the land is passed down through families. There's generational homesteads that have been part of this area for decades. It's not uncommon to see children walking across the street to visit relatives, riding bikes down to Baldwin Park, or families on golf carts heading up to play a game of pickleball on the weekends. We don't have sidewalks. Until now, we have never needed them. Our road has been quiet enough for our families to say, uh, safe on the streets and to enjoy the casual country walks, and as the kids go across the street. However, when news of the proposed development began to spread, a shared concern quickly emerged within our community. Neighbors gathered, organized meetings, newsletters were distributed, and even a Facebook page was started to discuss the issue. Tonight, many of my neighbors are here, and I would like to ask the crowd, for any of those who are here in attendance that are against the sheer size and volume.
Ma'am, ma'am, you need to address us.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
You can, you can speak in, they can hear you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, I would ask for my neighbors that are here to, um, please stand if you are against the size and sheer volume of this neighborhood. Thank you very much. From the beginning until now, the central concern of the community has been and still remains the proposed number of homes, three hundred and sixty-nine. Let me be clear, we are not anti-growth. We are not opposed to progress. We fully understand that Glen County is growing. We recognize the need for additional housing. What we take issue with is the sheer scale of this development. Introducing three hundred and sixty-nine homes into a quiet rural area like ours will drastically alter the quality of life for all of those who have lived here for years. There are many other types of neighborhoods that could be built on this land, ones that would be better suited to the character and needs of our community. If you look at the Glen County zoning maps, you will see that every single parcel on the eighty-two corridor from the lakes all the way across to the county line, except for two parcels, are zoned forest agricultural. The two parcels that are zoned, uh, PD, one of them is this one we're talking about on Myers Hill, which sat undeveloped for eighteen years. The other is Longwood, which is formerly the peninsula. This features homes on at least a half acre of land. In fact, if you look at the lakes, Myers Hill, Emmanuel Church, and beyond, you'll find that every single one has a parcel of at least a half acre or higher. My family owns Myers Hill Farm. If you look on the map, we are in the top left-hand corner right there. Our property shares eighteen hundred feet of property line with the PD parcel, and then we share an additional eighteen hundred feet of property line with the FA parcel. We came before this board in two thousand and fifteen to apply for a special use permit for seasonal farm events, weddings, and family gatherings. One of the main reasons our request was unanimously approved was the recognition of how rural our property was and how low-density the area was developed around us. This is still a very rural area. There are at least five farms on Myers Hill Road along. With farming comes noise. With farming comes noise, smells, and the occasional disruption that's simply part of agricultural life. In fact, the Oglesby Blueberry Farm, which is down the road from us, faced challenges with new neighbors moving in and objecting to the noises that their bird deterrents made during certain seasons. This is in a direct consequence of encroaching development on rural lands. The Georgia Legislature has even passed the Farm Act to protect agricultural properties from conflict that's happening with urban sprawl. Beyond the lifestyle impacts, our local farmers are very concerned about development's potential effect on our water resources. This proposed development includes a whopping twenty-three acres of ponds.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
You were just about at five minutes now. I'll let you have somebody else's five minutes if, if they're in agreement.
Okay.
Okay.
This twenty-three acres of ponds could alter the local water table. During dry periods, this could have a catastrophic effect on our farm ponds, which we rely upon for irrigation and fire suppression. We are not asking for no growth. We are asking for smart growth. We are asking for growth that respects the character of the area and the needs of the people that live here. We are asking the Commission to consider the long-term impacts on the quality of the life of the families and the farms that call this home. In conclusion, I respectfully urge the Commission to vote no on the proposed rezoning of the FA parcel to PD. The proposed development, with its scale and potential consequences, is simply too much for our rural community to absorb. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Debbie Van Bockenberg, and I live off Buck Swamp Road. I'm here with some other neighbors. And my question is, in the five years since moving to this area, where do all the cars go? If there's three hundred or four hundred homes, that means at least nine hundred, two thousand cars coming out. Has there been an aerial study overhead? Not everyone's going to eighty-two. They're going to be turning on Myers Hill and going to Buck Swamp. Right now, Buck Swamp, you can barely make a left-hand turn. It's Seventeen's a two-lane, if any of you have driven it. There's timber trucks hauling ass down that Highway Seventeen. There's not even a sidewalk on that little bridge. I cannot believe that anyone would entertain such a large development. My own parents developed in oh-six and have a lot of vacant lots on Seventeen called Berry Bluffs. They had to put in a turning lane. Is there a turning lane off eighty-two planned? Is there a turning lane, lane on the right and the left of Buck Swamp? Is there any plans? I mean, there's a new apartment complex, I think Section Eight, from an owner in Saint Simon's Island that was developed and passed by the fire station on Seventeen. Where's the planning? Do none of you live there? There's not even a school that can handle the amount of people that would move here. So while all this stuff takes time, I ask, show us some traffic lights, show us some turning lanes. How are you going to accommodate the people that are already there? Every week I hear about someone dying on eighty-two crossing that street. Accidents. One of our new neighbors in Laurel Grove Plantation about died. She was in the hospital for a year, taking a left off of Buck Swamp. People take chances because there's no traffic lights. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Steven Archibald. I'd first like to start with saying that a little bit of what I'm going to say is going to overlap with, with Ms. Roberts, I don't already say, but I'm going to believe those points. Earlier this month, I had sent each one of the Commissioners an email, and I would just like to read an abridged version of that email, because it covers everything I basically want to talk about. First, I would like to bring up something that troubles me greatly, and that is the current state of our Glen County Fire Department. As a City of Philadelphia firefighter and lieutenant for over thirty-two years, I know what it takes to fight fires, respond to emergencies, emergency situations. It doesn't matter if that, in a densely populated city, the suburb, forestry, or rural sites, they all need the same thing, and that was personnel and equipment. With much respect to our Glen County Fire Department, they are critically understaffed. Engine Six, located just a few miles from Myers Hill Road, is only staffed with a driver and an officer. The rest of the engine company, the actual host team that would go into service to extinguish a fire, are comprised of two firefighter paramedics that staff the medic unit housed with them. In other words, both units must show up to be available, must be available, and respond together to form just one actual functioning engine company. Engine Six covers an astounding one hundred and four square miles of first-duty territory. Their first duty is from the Sydney, Sydney Lanier Bridge all the way to the county line on eighty-two. The findings of the county would have you believe that Engine Six can handle a higher call volume, but that does not really tell the whole story, does it? I could go on, time will not permit me to, but I'm asking you to please take this into consideration as you make your decisions. Dear Commissioners, today the British Board will vote on a proposed rezone of eight fifty Myers Hill Road. I am asking you, in the strongest terms possible, to vote no on this rezone, and here's my reasoning. The developer has presented this request as a package deal, combining both parcels into one request, basically stating they cannot develop parcel, say, one eighty-one with its already-approved two-hundred-and-fifty dwellings unless the zoning for parcel two oh-seven is changed from FA to PD. With all due respect, it would appear that the developer did not perform his due diligence thoroughly and is relying solely on this board to fix his problem. The developer purchased these two parcels as-is, with no promise of change. Number two, for many different reasons, it could be argued that parcel one eighty-one should never have been changed from FA to PD in the first place. Look back on two thousand and six, obviously a lot has happened since then. One big reason, the lake's subdivision, where I live, was, didn't even exist. It is now just about built out. It is well-known, and basically common knowledge, that the lake subdivision floods extensively many times each year. I submit to you that parcel two oh-seven is currently zoned FA and should stay that way. Virtually every single parcel connects with it is also zoned FA, with the exception of parcel one eighty-one. And every single parcel, including those in the lake subdivision, is also FA. A particular concern in the applicant's rezoning application is found in Section Two, Letter B, existing and proposed zoning to comply with same use in the area and complying with the county's comprehensive plan. As Ms. Mrs. Roberts already stated about the farms and the acreage, and also on Myers Hill Road, there's also the hostel in the forest, which is ninety-seven acres, the lake subdivision, which the minimum lot size there is a half acre. I would like to know where this comprehensive plan they are referring to, that it complies with. Glen County is undergoing an unprecedented period of growth. Everywhere you look, there is some kind of development underway. Majestic Oaks, one hundred and fifty-five townhomes, and high-density, single-family homes were just approved. One hundred townhomes across from Satilla Marsh School, along with the seventy-five-unit apartment building, Phase One, on Route Seventeen, next to the firehouse. And that's just in the immediate area of what's going on right now. Combine that with all, with, with what has already been built during all of these post-COVID years countywide, and what's still to come, it really adds up. But I submit, for your careful consideration, that the rapid growth can be a double-edged sword. We all agree, you can stop the growth and development, and no one is trying to do that, but what we truly need is the measured and responsible growth. In closing, as I see it, this board has a daunting task to make these decisions that affect the lives of literally thousands and thousands of people for a very long time. A proposal to build three hundred and sixty-nine quote workforce-sized houses is no small decision. You cannot make good decisions unless you have good information and can separate fact from opinion and speculation. No one who lives in this surrounding area of these two parcels is in favor of this proposed rezoning. Please consider the wishes of your constituencies. This developer did not bring even one single person from our area to the zoning board meeting that was in favor of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. State your name, please, sir.
Yes, good evening, Board. My name is George Hernandez. I live at one ninety-six Winding Trail. I'm up in Laurel Grove, off of Buck Swamp. I'm going to try not to tell you something you don't already know. I've got some information I want to give to you. We'll, we'll see which way it goes. Little, little about me, my wife and I refugied from Metro Atlanta down here in two thousand and nineteen. I lived in Forsyth County, one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation. When I moved there in two thousand, I could ride the main road about five miles along Post Road. I could ride that road in fifteen minutes, twenty minutes at rush hour. By the time we were ready to move in two thousand and nineteen, that rush hour trip to move five miles is about an hour. And the way that that happened was a hundred subdivision, a hundred house subdivision here, a hundred house subdivision there, a hundred house subdivision there, another place, and now we're overrun with, with a lot of traffic. So I came across something that I think is a very interesting study out of UGA from back in two thousand and two, and it looked at property types, residential, commercial, rural property types. And this study was done in asking the question, well, how much money do you put in versus how much do you take out in county services? And what the study found, and there is, I've, I've sent it to you in email to the general website, so you can peruse it at your convenience. But what that study found is rural land, vacant land, puts more into the county coffers than it takes out. You know, vacant land does not call nine-one-one, vacant land does not need fire or EMS. Commercial properties need more, of course, because they do need some fire and police from time to time, but commercial, because of the valuation, they put in more into the county coffers than they take out in services. Residential property, on the other hand, is different from the other two, because residential property consumes more in county services than it takes in. Now, we all got to have a place to live, we all got to have a place to work, and we all got to have a place to recreate, but it seems to me that what that study says is that we need a mix of commercial and residential. We need to really look strongly at getting commercial residential up, I'm sorry, commercial development up to supplement or to subsidize the residential, otherwise we're going to have to raise taxes. And we know prices aren't going down anytime soon anywhere, so it's a question of growth. We're going to, we're going to have growth for sure, but it's how that we manage it. I look at this, and this is a big development, no question about it. There's so many things you can do with it, and, you know, I'd, I'd love to see the developer sharpen his pencil a little, and look at something mixed-use. Look at putting some commercial in there. You can, you know, you can charge more for it. You wouldn't lose any money, at least I doubt, if you did it right. Do some commercial in there, get those cars off the street, having people walking to work, or riding their bicycle, or if they're lazy, riding the golf cart to work, or to the restaurant, or to the pub, or something like that. But I, I just think that there's so much land there, you can do something with that that's bigger than what you're looking at doing right now. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time.
You can lift that up a little bit if you need to.
Okay, thank you. My name is Eddie Quaylar, and I'm here on behalf of the Hostel and Forest. We're a hundred and forty-two acres, real close. It looks like adjacent to this property. And I appreciate all the commentary from the previous speakers in agreement with almost all of it. The only thing I can speak of, from our perspective, is pertaining to the flooding that has happened, we're on a hundred and forty-two acres, and while there's flooding happening next door with subdivisions, we've been having flood and issues coming from, from the fire break and actually coming across our driveway to where we were not able to even have business or guests come in to the, in to visit. And we were in contact with Johnny Barker with, you know, drainage down at county. They helped address some issues with that. They did some clearing in our wetlands, making the water drain off more appropriately, but I, we're still experiencing flooding issues, and that's the one thing, since volunteering and working for them since two thousand and four, only these issues have increased. And my, my hope would be that these, that there's more time figuring out where the water goes. They said that they've got to get permits or figure out certain things before the next step. Well, shoot, that sounds like figuring out that step is really important, and I would hope that that would be addressed before they go any further. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Paul Cervantes. I live right off of Buck Swamp Road.
Say, say your name again, please.
Say your name again, please.
It's, I'll slow down, Paul, and the last name is Cervantes. It is a Spanish name. Anyhow, I've been living off of Buck Swamp Road for about two years now. Just a little bit of background, we heard from somebody that was in the fire department for quite some time. I spent thirty years in law enforcement, and I can tell you with some certainty that anytime you have a lack of appropriate emergency services per capita, there's usually a calculation that they do per capita of how many officers you need, how many firefighters you need, depending on what state you're in. It's, it can be catastrophic to a family, right? In any kind of emergency situation, minutes are critical. Currently, it's my understanding that we're short-staffed emergency services, twenty short-staffed fire department and about thirty-six of the police department. So my question is, is what's the plan? If you throw in all these other houses there, what's the plan to bring that up? If the current situation, we're already understaffed with our emergency services, what are we going to do when we throw another three-hundred-some houses there? So that's the point I'd like to drive home. If there is no plan, it should pretty much be dead on arrival. I mean, we shouldn't even be having this, this discussion. You should have that plan in place before you do something like this. And it doesn't seem like we've had any discussion on that. If your, if your situation is already dire right now, in the current state of affairs, and you're understaffed with emergency services, what's going to happen when all these houses go in? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We got about, we got about ten minutes left.
I'm Gary Cross. I wasn't even going to speak, and I'm not going to take five minutes, but years ago, I'd walked this property. I was interested in it. I'd gone to the county because I think the easement coming off Myers Hill was fifty-eight feet and not sixty. Therefore, I was told that I could only do four subdivided parcels, which was fine with me. So I'm, I'm very familiar with it. On the other plats you had up there, on the ninety-acre piece, there's a large wetland separating the two dry areas. Was that bridge that I saw going across? Are you going to build a bridge across? It's a wide, wide wetland separating the two halves of that property. How do you get from one side to the other? I haven't heard anybody say. You can't access that into the ninety-acre piece from Myers Hill. I looked into that. What, I mean, the developers here, he's still here?
Yes.
Okay, was that a bridge?
Mr. Cross, Mr. Cross.
Okay.
Us.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I just had that question. I, I saw what looked like a bridge on, on the map.
That, that, that was my take, too. It was a bridge.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Leonard Butler, and I also stay in the lakes with the gentleman that spoke earlier. And I'm speaking more so to the area that I decided to move to and purchase. And I've been living in the lakes since two thousand and thirteen. And a big part of the allurement of me moving there was country living. And I moved from the city, and I had an opportunity and a choice to make to move where I wanted to be versus where I was. And development, to me, turns country living into inner-city community living. True and all, with all due respect to any businessperson, development and growth is inevitable. We understand that. Everybody who lives here in this area sees the development, and we all pay taxes on development. We understand that. Everybody who lives here in this area sees the development, and we all pay taxes on development. When you bring in more multi-unit properties, now we're changing the landscape from country living to inevitably become city living. Most of the individuals that are here, I heard someone say that they acquire property through generations. Well, I'm an implant to the area, and it's only because I chose to live there. And it was because of the allurement of country living. So if we keep developing out all of these pockets, because land development is inevitable, which it is, we don't, no longer have a residential community. It becomes a industrial, down-the-line, business, so on and so forth. And as to what somebody spoke to earlier, it is a lot of accidents. As a matter of fact, on my way here on eighty-two, it was an accident. Because, yeah, we're developing or looking at plans to develop, but the infrastructure's not being developed. We're just adding developments on top of a infrastructure that was formulated for less-impact movements. So that's the purpose of why I wanted to speak to it. And it's purely from a residential standpoint that, nah, I don't wanna see four hundred units come in and you changing the landscape. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Come on. We got about six minutes left. I'll give you all of it.
I'll give back a minute of it.
Okay.
I'm Paul Oglesby, Oglesby Family Farm. I spoke to several of y'all over the, several weeks. Mr. Neal, I spoke to you. We had a conversation. And I, I, I'm concerned, not about flooding, that, that a lot of people's concerned about. I'm concerned about these big lakes drawing from my pond. I'm about a quarter of a mile from this development. And I understand the developer is a farmer. He under, he understands you have to have water. And starting about February fifteenth, these blueberry bushes is gonna be at a stage that I'm gonna have to frost protect. Sometimes I have to frost protect eight, ten hours at a time. When, when y'all sleeping, I'm out in a truck at night making sure those sprinklers are running and not freezing up. Now, and I have about three thousand clients come out every year. And I assure you, if I don't have a crop, they're mad at me. And I need that water. And when you dig a twenty acres, I'm not a soil scientist, but I know water leaches through the ground. I'm about ten feet higher than this property. I've been told I bought Myers Hill Road. That's my property is the reason they named it Myers Hill Road. I brought the, the crown of that road. So it takes a lot to keep a water level in my pond. So if these big lakes drains my pond, you know, Governor Kent passed a law. He's seen this coming. And I, I, I've actually had to use it because of complaints about my farm. Georgia is still a farming state. There's forty-seven thousand working farms in the state of Georgia. It employs more than anybody, any other industry. There's forty-seven thousand working farms in the state of Georgia. The farms in Glen County, you can count on your hands. It, we used to be a farming community. I've got deeds that, that says this was Brunswick Farms back in the day. And far as infrastructure, I was on a road the other day, and I was trying to get out. I was coming from, from the new pharmacy out there, Golden Eyes Pharmacy. And that loop that goes around there, the road is directly across from the fire department, and I was turning left. I wanted to go to Stokes' Welding Shop, talk to him. I didn't wanna turn right. I wanted to turn left. There was ten cars backed up behind me. Well, this lady blew her horn because I couldn't get out. I would inch up, traffic would come from town. I'd inch up, traffic would come from Camden County. I sat there for five minutes. She finally blew her horn. So I got out, and, and I walked her car, not mad at her, but I gave her a flower with all of y'all's names on, on there. I said, "The reason I can't get out, because there's no right-turning lane on this road, which everybody goes to the right. There's plenty of room there to turn right. But it's not there." I said, "I'm not mad at you. I'm mad at the commissioners, and you should be. Here's their phone number." And, and there's a guy that lives on Myers Hill Road. He's over eighty years old. He's been there all his life. He can tell you everything about that area. He drives a black and silver Chevrolet box truck. You see him all over the community. You might see him in Wendy's parking lot, sitting around. I always speak to him. You may see him at Friendly Express, just sitting around watching. You get behind him, coming to town, his top speed is thirty miles an hour. There's nowhere to pass on three oh three until you get past Tore River Bridge. Why is there a yellow line from South Brunswick Bridge to I ninety-five? Why is there a yellow line on the right side? There's plenty of room to pass there. And I've been directly behind Mr. Jose San, and I've been thirty cars back behind Jose San.
Okay, we're, we're, we're at our time. We're actually over it. I, I, I do wanna answer one thing.
Okay.
Eighty-two, three oh three, and seventeen are state highways. We can, and we, and we have requested the intersection improvement at Myers Hill and, what's it, road across? Radcliffe. And, and they came back and they told us, "Well, we can do this." It wasn't what we wanted, but it, we were told, "If we don't take that, you might not get anything for ten years." And, and, you know, we get blamed for, for the state highways, and there's really, you know, the DOT is the one. And we go to Atlanta once or twice a year and beg. And, you know, that's, that's just, that's a fact. I, I, I don't wanna knock anything what you were saying.
I got you.
But, you know, everybody, but, we get blamed, and, and I don't mind the blame. I got, I'm Polack. I got
Yeah.
weak back, strong mind. Or, weak mind, strong back. But it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a state deal.
Can I answer one question that, that Sammy had?
You can.
When you run a sewer line, even the developer pays for it? When that, when that line's in the ground, anybody else, even one lot, has to tap into that sewer line, and they have to pay a tap-in fee because they will not issue you a separate tank of well permits because that sewer line is access. You have access to it. Now, you have to pay a tap-in fee, but it's mandatory from then on. Just so y'all know, I've, I've been in that situation on same, same as I.
With written exception, yes, sir, but our time is...
Yeah, we're, we're, we're out of time.
Is that included my minute that you gave me?
We, we gave, we gave you about two minutes more than the six.
Yeah, that, that one minute you said you'd use, it, it turned into six plus, so.
Well, I'd like to see this stay FA.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, so now we have, we, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and would you like to say something else?
I can try to answer some of the questions that were asked. I have about fifteen things written down I could try to go through pretty quickly. If, if you'd allow. So first thing, with the, the sewer taffees, I just wrote that at the top here, 'cause I ran it, ran it bottom of my paper. But as was just said, you can do a written ex, a written exemption to joint water and sewer, and you wouldn't be required to do that. Also, there's a five-hundred-foot requirement. So if, if I can, Stephanie, sorry, I'm going the wrong way. There we go. So there's a five-hundred-foot requirement, and if the utilities are, are brought in, if we're talking about Myers Hill, I mean, the closest, closest gravity would end up being here. There's no reason to extend it up further. So in this distance, the scale of this is a three-hundred-scale plan sheet, and I'll get into kind of the scale and the buffers here in a second. But, I mean, that's well over a hundred, or well over five hundred feet. So the distance from roughly where my cursor is to this lot here across there, that's fif, that's one thousand one hundred and fifty feet. So, I mean, there is significant buffers off of residential areas. It's kind of, you know, the, the lakes is the closest thing, and you could see we're putting the, these ponds and, and buffers off of that to be able to handle the stormwater for this development and, and the lakes. And then the only home that was actually backing up to this development was actually right here. And with Mr. Everett, we're talking with the landowner at the Mainland Planning Commission meeting, they asked to, to remove the two homes that were here, and he removed that from the plan. So, and, and so really, there's no homes that directly back up without a significant buffer. Even from this property line over here, I know the property owner spoke there, from this property line to the nearest property line here, that's a hundred feet. So there's a significant buffer off of that as well. And then...
No, sir, we, we can't, we can't have comment.
So...
Your fine.
And to try to answer his question, so from, from right here, where my cursor is, to right here, that's three hundred feet from there to there. So you could, I'm not sure exactly where you're talking about, but you can end up trying to scale it off of that distance from there to there is three hundred feet. And so that, that kind of speaks to the, the taps and the, and the buffers. And then the traffic, so typically with a development of this size, the zoning, obviously, a traffic study's not required. But obviously, a, a development of this size, and even smaller in Glen County, once we go through the zoning, we have to go through the engineering process and do the engineering of the site and go through the core process and submit that to the county. It goes through the engineering department, the drainage review, and, and also the, the traffic. And so typically, Mr. Granados would end up coming back at this point after we submit and say, "Hey, a project this scale, you're gonna need a traffic study." And he's gonna require us to do a traffic study for this, which would analyze the highway, how, how this development directly impacts Myers Hill and the both intersections, the, always the traffic could go out of this. So any kind of improvement from that traffic study that's warranted due to this, it would be at the developer's expense to include any kind of deceleration lane, anything like that, that were, that was determined in the traffic study. The county would likely, Mr. Granados or the engineering department would require, require those upgrades as a part of this development. There were some questions about the size of the project and increasing the scale. I mean, Stephanie spoke to kind of what we were doing, but it's, we're, we're pretty much, it's two hundred and fifty that was previously approved. So we could go out there tomorrow if we had the plans ready and start, you know, constructing two hundred and fifty homes. The, bringing in the FA track is because it's owned by the same develop, owned by the same owner and to allow for the forest main extension to try to help offset some of that cost, but also trying to work with joint water and sewer and seeing if there's any help there. The comprehensive plan, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to go pretty quick for everybody's, everybody's time. The comprehensive plan, Stephanie can speak more to that if y'all would like for it to. But I know early on, when working, the community, I believe, had Jimmy Arnold, was working directly with me, I was working back with Jimmy Arnold. He spoke to the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan spoke to the, the usage out there, and it was speaking to exactly what this PD is, the eight thousand square feet. And, and I, I hope I'm right on that, and Stephanie, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. The, the ponds, ponds are, are, are required for every development because there's the county stormwater ordinance that requires us to detain the pre-versus-post. So speaking to the, you know, the hundred-and-forty-acre parcel that's, that's near this one that the gentleman came up for, I'm not sure what kind of wetlands are on his property versus this, but, I mean, everybody knows there's flooding in this area. So that's why there's extensive ponds to address those concerns. And also, the downstream at the railroad tracks is a big pinch point, and I'm not sure if engineering can speak to that and the improvements potentially to the, that culvert crossing there to help drainage overall in this area. But there would be no pre, the pre-versus-post would have to be equal, and that would go through the engineering department. And, and so there's not gonna be any additional flow leaving this site to any other property in the area. That is a requirement of Glen County, which we as engineers have to hold up to. The, let's see, the, the project, it's a, it's gonna be a phased project. You don't build a, a, a pro, a project this large at one time typically. So it would be phased. They're not gonna come in and construct all these ponds and all these at, at one time. And it's gonna be, like Mr. Everett said, you know, this is years in the making. It's not gonna show up here, and it's gonna take nine months to get through the engineering and, and the permitting process with the county before anything could happen, if he said go tomorrow. And then speaking to the commercial, if I were to come in here and ask y'all for commercial on this property, y'all would probably, probably tell me to turn around and walk out the door immediately with all the residential around. So we, we definitely didn't wanna bring commercial into the mix. The comprehensive plan speaks to this as being residential and eight thousand square feet, square foot lots. So we just wanted to, to match that and match what was already previously approved in the PD. Let's see, Myers Hill, I'm getting toward the end. Myers Hill, the access, I believe it was brought up that that was a, and he was, I believe, speaking to this here, being sixty-foot, it's actually a hundred-foot right-of-way through there. We got the survey for the whole area, and that's a hundred-foot right-of-way. And then, one thing, the crossing, so the, we're not, so whenever we go through the, the core, actually, we're going through the core process right now of getting the plan approved with the, with Core, which is just a typical process, you know, go through zoning, you submit your wetlands to the, the, to the, the Core. The Core reviews, they come out, do any kind of site inspection, anything like that, and, and to approve the wetlands that are shown here. And then during the, and that, that process, just so everybody knows, I mean, it, it can take up to a year for the Core to make a determination on the wetlands. So that's another reason. This is gonna be years down the road, is just the process you have to go through before you can break ground. But this crossing here with, with the Core requirements, you could do a bridge. Obviously, it's too costly. So what you would end up doing, you can get a Core permit to cross a wetland. And, I mean, GDOT does it all the time. We do it on projects almost every day in Glen County, where you can impact up to an acre. It's considered a nationwide permit, but it goes to the Core for review and approval, and there's a process for it, and we follow all state laws with that. So that's, that's what would be happening there. And I hope I answered all the questions.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay. Any questions, gentlemen?
None.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen. We've heard both sides. Can I entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, before we entertain a motion, I, I'd just like to say a few words. I wanna thank all of y'all for coming here tonight. I appreciate y'all's concerns and, and your willingness to wanna try to improve our county. I wanna say that, you know, this aspect of, of being part of a commissioner is probably the most difficult when it affect, when you do a rezoning, it affects the lives of your neighbors, 'cause y'all are my neighbors. I mean, I live out in that part of the world, and so does Commissioner Clark. But when the, when our last census came out, we were, it took us ten years to get from seventy-five to eighty-five But when the, when our last census came out, we were, it took us ten years to get from seventy-five to eighty-five thousand people, which was, and that census came out just a little over two years ago, since I've been on the commission. And since that time, we are already at ninety thousand. And within five years, they're telling us that we're gonna be at a hundred thousand people. So it's our job as commissioners to be prepared for that. And this is, whether we like it or not, this is being, trying to be prepared and be prepared for the growth that's coming this way. And it's difficult. I just, I want y'all to know that it's a difficult task for commissioners to sit up here because it does affect the lives of you and myself. I know that where I live, I look out my front door, and I've got a hotel that's going up a hundred yards from my house. It's just, and I've got truck stops all around me. It's just, it's not, it's not the part of the job that is the most enjoyable part of it. But I do enjoy representing y'all and trying to be a part of the community because I was born and raised out, you know, out in Fancy Bluff, I call it, exit twenty-nine now. I wish it was still called Fancy Bluff. It's got a much better connotation to it. But anyway, I just wanted to say that before a motion was rendered, and I want to thank y'all for being here.
Mr. Chairman, I got one question. Maybe staff.
Answer four. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's fine. Stephanie, in the lakes, what is the, is it half acre lots or is it eight thousand?
Uh, no, it's larger. Most of them would be about half acre.
So it's totally different than, okay, all right. I, well, I'll start. You know, Commissioner Tosson said, me and him both live out there. I've been out there thirty-nine years, and I've actually been on this property on a four-wheeler. And honestly, folks, it's a swamp. I've been on it, and it's been probably fifteen, twenty years, and I'm quite sure it hasn't dried up. I was looking at the map, and can you bring the map back up, Stephanie? I got a question on that.
The zoning map, sir?
Yeah, that, keep going, right there.
Right here?
Back, yeah, that one there. On the FA lot, I mean, looking at it, guys, from my opinion here, and I'm, like I said, I'm not a builder or a developer, and by no stretch of imagination, and to the developer, I am one hundred percent for property rights. And if you wanted to build it as is, no problem for me at all. But that FA lot is almost fifty percent wetlands. It really is. And we're talking about getting an acre causeway, bridge, whatever, from one side to the other, you know. And um, it was brought up about the railroad track, and I'm very familiar with it. All this water, and everybody that lives out there knows this, all this water and the water that will have to go through the hostel and by the radio station there, and goes to a county ditch that then runs under Fish Hall Road. Glen County's done their part. That culvert is about four foot, huge. That water gushes through there. You get an inch of rain, it's running to South Brunswick River. Problem is the railroad track, two little culverts. And anybody that's ever dealt with the railroad, they'll tell you one thing, but it'll take a while. Right now, in the lakes, I get calls, Commissioner Tosson probably does, Commissioner Rofowski, I've been out there many a time. They own half acre lots. They've got lakes all over it out there. It's low. My dad, who was a commissioner many years ago, he, when these properties out here, it's almost like you're in a ball. You got the Still River to one side, you got the Brunswick River to the other side, they're on little bluffs there, and everything in between is trapped. The water, the drainage is a big issue. The other thing is, we always, and this is one of the things, and I know my commissioners probably get mad at me for harping on it. You know, Myers Hill Road is a long stretch of road, and we're looking at putting four, five hundred additional cars on there, and we can't even get a sidewalk down it. And uh, you've got, you've got a lot of families out there, the Way family, the Oglesby's been out there a long time. We've got Brookman Park, but we don't have sidewalks to let the kids get from Laurel Grove and all other places to that park at Brookman. We need to be prepared as a government. And I know it's, you know, we do things, and I don't understand it, but a sidewalk in there would make it a little bit easier and make it safer for our kids. We can't get, me and Commissioner Tosson for the last two years have been talking about sidewalks. And there, Emmanuel Church Road and other places. So that's a safety issue. The other issue is the fire trucks, the fire station out there. Great bunch of guys and ladies. I've had them come to my house. I've had them come to my dad's house. They do a fantastic job. They are two slots there, and we got a building beside it. We need another fire state, another pumper or something else additionally out there. We forget a lot of times that the port, which has a thousand employees daily. I work for a trucking company with a hundred drivers are out there doing dangerous work, the longshoremen. We can't even get a red light between three oh three and seventeen all the way to Nahan. We can't get a red light coming out on Buck Swamp Road. And I can tell you, a lot of these people, because you're gonna get log jammed, they're gonna come all the way through and cut out here in Baumgardner and go through Live Oak. That ain't telling about the flood, literally how low it is in Live Oak Lane and all these other places. I just think the infrastructure is just not there. And I believe when you put three hundred and sixty-nine homes in there in five, seven, eight, nine years, me and Sammy won't be here, but there'll be other commissioners for District One and other enlarged commissioners. And the people that will buy these lots will be moaning and complaining about the flooding issue. I don't care how many lakes you've been in there. I've been in there. I see, I know how low it is. Scott Rife at the radio station, go by that radio station. It can be bone dry for thirty days in August, and that little pond he has out front is full to the rim because there is water out there. It's low, it's low. The gentleman has every right to develop it as is, nothing we can do about it. But when you come to us asking for a rezon, as he is tonight, I just, we've got too many safety issues, drainage, the impacts, that water is going to be, it is bottlenecked there at Fish Hall Road in that ditch going to the Brunswick River Bridge. And we're just gonna have more folks, and it's gonna be a challenge for the developers. And whenever you see a causeway, an acre, going across a literally swamp, just so you can put more homes in there, it's, you know, he's got a right to do it as is, but not, not.
Please, please.
I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Stephanie, can you put the motions back up, please?
And Mr. Chairman, if I can take the unpopular stance here.
You may.
We talk about needing sidewalks on Buck Swamp and Myers Hill. We talk about Buck Swamp needs wider roads and improvements. There's not a lot we can do when we get to the state roads that are under GDOT, except encourage them to participate with us to put it on their plan to improve those roads. But Buck Swamp and Myers Hill, as far as roads and sidewalks, that is stuff that the county would be responsible to do. Where do we get the funds to do that? If we don't broaden our tax base, you don't want higher taxes, we don't want higher taxes. But if we do not, if we do not broaden our tax base so that we get additional revenues to keep up with the infrastructure that's coming, then we don't get to improve the infrastructure. And I know that's not a popular consideration to you guys tonight, but it is something that we have to consider. And we need to broaden our tax base. We need to accommodate the industry that's coming, that our children and our grandchildren can have gainful employment above minimum wage jobs. Those are things that we strive for here, and it's something that I have strived for since I've been a commissioner. So it's counterpoint to what Commissioner Clark is saying. His points are valid, and I get them. But there's valid points on the other side of the argument as well.
Okay, anybody else?
Commissioners, I'd like to say something as the county engineer. To reiterate, Mr. Neal, there's plans to repave Buck Swamp Road from US seventeen to Myers Hill Road as part of our LMIC for 2025 that we partner with GDOT. And also, the Good Place Road that comes off of Buck Swamp Road that runs between Buck Swamp and Live Oak Lane will also be resurfaced as part of our 2025 repaving initiative through the county. So just to clarify that we talked about state routes, this is roads that we see that we needed to repave this time, for this next coming year through the engineering department. So just know that we're looking at each road, and this is one that's really needed. As the other commissioner said, I lived off of Buck Swamp and Myers Hill myself as a county engineer, and I'm seeing the need for this area. So we're gonna be addressing those roads in this coming year. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, commissioners, it's back to you. Can I entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to deny ZM dash twenty-four dash nine.
Second. Okay, I have a motion to deny ZM twenty-four dash nine. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, how about, that's in favor of denial. Okay, in favor of approval?
It's against the denial.
Yeah, against the denial. So we got three.
Yep, four.
There were four.
Who's the four? Sammy? I missed it, I'm sorry. Okay, so there's four and two against, and Commissioner, but four passes. Okay, I'm sorry, gentlemen, but that one was denied. If you guys want to leave, we'll give you a few minutes. And I am gonna have to recuse myself from this one because it, the next thirty-seven adjoins property I own.
I just heard too much, but. Motion. Yeah, but he said he'd like to do two fifty, but he brought, he brought three sixty.
No, the whole project is to make sure you're not, he'll do two fifty tonight. You know, without him.
But he's asking for it.
No, he's asking. That's his business, but tonight he was asking for a hundred and nineteen. Two fifty could be done by him or anybody else.
All right, Chairman Rofowski has recused himself from item number thirty-seven, so I will present it. Item number thirty-seven is consider approving the removal of a utility easement condition placed on the eastern half of First Street between Palm and Pell Nutta Streets as a condition imposed during the abandonment of First Street by the Board of Commissioners in 2017 and authorize the issuance of a quitclaim deed for the eastern half of First Street to the adjacent property owners located to the east of the abandoned area of First Street. And Mr. Mumford, this sounds like a lawyer clause.
It is a lot of lawyer talk, commissioners, but the agenda item, I think, states it pretty much.
Please speak into you, Mike.
So the, in 2017, the board approved the abandonment of this portion of First Street and conditioned upon a utility easement being given to the county on the entirety. The property to the west, the church property, they did give that utility easement. Fast forward, and they received their quitclaim deed. Fast forward to today, the owner is asking that that condition be removed. We have checked with staff, with engineering, to see if that easement is still needed or the utility easement is still needed. They have said it's not, so it's back before you now to remove the condition of that abandonment. And if you were to approve this, that would remove it and allow staff and the commission to go ahead and issue that quitclaim deed to the owners to the east side. And that, with that, that is the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Commissioners, questions regarding this, comments? Motion?
Mr. Chair, I offer a motion to approve the request as offered.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Duncan, second by Commissioner Clark. Any other discuss? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is five for, one extension, and one absent.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Number thirty-eight is consider a resolution to establish Glen County's legislative priorities for the 2025 session of the Georgia General Assembly.
Mr. Mumford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this resolution for you this evening requests three things. It requests that your local delegation introduce legislation on three different items. The first item is to increase the accommodation excise tax, which is your hotel motel tax, from its existing rate of five percent to seven percent. And this is also a sister and companion resolution to number thirty-nine, which will come following this. And then it also increases, request legislation to adjust the salaries of the Board of Commissioners. That's the second request for legislation, and this is local legislation to commissioners. And then the third request is to request local legislation to allow for one direct appointment of a county commissioner to the EDA board. And then the resolution also sets out the reasons for the legislative request. If there's any questions from the board beyond that, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Eric. Does anybody have any questions?
Does this require a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, it does.
Well, that being said, I would like to make the motion that we approve the legislative agenda for 2025.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Tosson, a second by Commissioner Swett to approve item number thirty-eight. All in favor? Anyone against? That's six oh, Rhonda. Number thirty-nine, consider adoption of a resolution requesting local legislation to authorize an increase in Glen County's hotel motel excise tax from five percent to seven percent as permitted under OCGA forty-eight dash thirteen dash fifty-one, section B. Mr. Mumford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is the actual resolution that's required by state law to initiate the increase, a request increase, the hotel motel tax from five to seven percent. And there are certain requirements that are in this resolution that state law requires. That includes the, not only the rate, but also the uses of the funds and the split. So I'll give you the rough split that's in the resolution. It'll be forty-two percent that goes to the CBB by law, another forty-two percent that goes to the county for general use, and then around fourteen percent that has to be used for tourism project, development projects. And that is in this resolution along with the list of projects that the county has worked with the CBB to develop. And that is the report, presentation. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I don't have, gentlemen, any questions? Mr. McQuade from the Convention, Visitor's Bureau is here, and if you would like to, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, commissioners. My name is Scott McQuade. I'm the president and CEO of the Golden Isles Convention and Visitors Bureau. It's been my proud pleasure to serve the county here for over a decade, and the CBB has served the county for over five decades. Believe it or not, as we look at. Believe it or not, as we look at this, what is often referred to as the bed tax, the bed tax in Glenn County goes back to the nineteen seventies. Glenn County was one of the first counties in the entire state to pass this ordinance. Uh, after nearly fifty years, the tourism industry now sustains uh, an annual economic impact of almost two billion dollars a year. So, we've come a long way in fifty years. And certainly, we have been working with the county very closely, really for probably the last five years or so, discussing this matter. But I know it's really been on the table for my entire time here. I do want to say I appreciate the Commissioners' patience with this. It's certainly an effort that undertakes a lot of conversation with lodgers, whether they're short-term rental owners, campgrounds, hotels or motels. It, it does have an impact. And after really the last year of concerted effort with the CBB and the county working together, our organization and our industry recognizes that it's time for the hospitality industry to increase this tax to really lighten the burden of the infrastructure and reinvest in our community. So, as you heard this evening, a lot of concerns about infrastructure. The good news with this tax increase is this is a way that visitors can pay some of their way on the infrastructure burdens from the county. This is not a tax on residents, this is a tax on the overnight accommodations. So, it comes to a great help to our community. And we also feel through our conversations with the hospitality industry that the time is right this year that we should take this measure forward to reinvest. Um, these reinvestments will help us not only harness the power of our visitor spending to our community, but improve things such as our roadways, our aesthetics, our appearances, improve transportation, improve parks and recreational opportunities throughout our entire county. Just wanted to take a moment to thank the commission and the community for being wonderful stewards to our hospitality industry. It's really our entire community's hospitality spirit that allows us to keep bringing visitors back. And this is a great step forward for our public and for our partnership. So, I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the industry. And we look forward to many great projects coming as a result of this effort.
Thank you, Mr. McQuade. Do you, we have any questions?
I have a statement I'd like to offer.
Please.
Um, I think this is a good way to reinforce our partnership with the CBB. And I'm very appreciative that we have such a strong partnership, Scott. And that also to give back to the community in the form of infrastructure improvements. Uh, all of our residents deserve improvements in our, our infrastructure and this is a very painless way to do it. So, our visitors help us to improve that infrastructure. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer a motion that we adopt the resolution as stated.
Second.
Okay. We have the motion by Commissioner Duncan, we have a second by Commissioner Tosterson. All in favor? That'd be six oh, Rhonda. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we go into executive session.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. We don't have any public comment, right? Okay. Now, do we have need for executive session?
Yes, we do. So, I'd like to make a motion that we do have executive sessions for property acquisitions and potential litigation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion for executive session for, uh, I just saw it. Property acquisition and potential litigation. First by Commissioner Tosterson, second by Commissioner Clark, all in favor? We are adjourned.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and adopt a resolution authorizing the exercise of eminent domain using the declaration of taking method of combination for public road purposes to acquire portions of parcel number zero three dash one two six four nine, zero three dash one two six four eight, zero three dash one two six three nine, and zero three dash one two six four zero, along with two construction easements for the Dungeon Air Drive Extension Road Project.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Neal, second by Commissioner Clark, all in favor? Uh, motion to...
Motion carried.
Motion carried, Rhonda, six out.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I propose a motion to approve the executive section record, uh, recommendations of the Board of Commissioners to approve the Director of Engineering regarding property acquisition.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Neal, second by Commissioner Clark, to approve the motion of the county engineer for property acquisition, all in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and adopt a resolution authorizing the exercise of eminent domain using the declaration of taking method of combination for public road purposes to acquire portions of parcel number zero three dash one two six four nine, zero three dash one two six four eight, zero three dash one two six three nine, and zero three dash one two six four zero, along with two construction easements for the Dungeon Air Drive Extension Road Project.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Neal, second by Commissioner Clark, any discussion? All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor? We're adjourned.